Good evening and welcome to this work session for Stillwater Area Public Schools ISD 834 for July 22. This work session is on the topic of discussing parameters for a referendum ask from our community this fall. I think we have a, our consultant, Ellers, is on the way, ran into some traffic, but I will let Superintendent Lance Feld begin the discussion.
Hey, thank you Chair Petrie and Board Directors. Thank you for coming to our work session tonight to discuss our levy request decision. We are hoping that we'll have the work session today and then by the following next regularly scheduled board meeting on August 12th, you could take a vote on our ballot language for the upcoming referendum vote on November 2nd. And so, right now on our current referendum operating levy, time is running out. We've had this existing levy since 2013 and it expires at the end of the 2021-22 school year. So with that, some information, it has been generating depending on enrollment and other factors between 11 to 12 million in an annual fund, which equates to about 10% of our annual budget, which I think runs around, Director Tyne is at about 114 million on our overall budget, so it's about 10% of our annual budget. And without this levy, we run significant budget cuts and reductions in staff and programming. Within the last eight years, we know the costs have increased and state funding has not been able to keep up with that. Our existing levy does not buy what it used to and we have cut our budget three times since we've had it in place totaling about $7 million since the levy was approved. And I have been through cuts before and they can be devastating to supporting our students, supporting their learning. And vote no on, at a very minimum renewal on this will have a significant impact on our students and their learning. If there's not at a very minimum a renewal, classrooms and programs will not look the same. They will be very different. Okay, welcome Ellers and appreciate you coming. I am just going to continue and then we'll bring you into this. If we do not provide a new operating levy with our referendum, we will have higher class sizes, fewer teachers, fewer paras, fewer support staff, less support for our struggling learners, less support for students that are our gate program, other programs, our higher achieving students. We'll have to say the least fewer opportunities for all of our students, loss of elective classes, loss of specialized programs, loss of activities for our kids. So I am here tonight to say that we know renewing is not enough. We need to replace the expiring levy. We need at a minimum an additional two to three million to address ongoing budget shortfalls, inflation, rising costs, state funding shortfalls, and unfunded mandates. We want this referendum to be an investment in our kids. We want to invest in academic achievement, mental health, social emotional learning, and student engagement. And especially going through this pandemic, we know the importance of learning and technology. We want to, at a very minimum, prevent continued cuts. We want at a very minimum to preserve and maintain what we already have and we possibly want to bring back some of the programmings and supports that we've lost through previous budget cuts. We know we need to increase supports for our kids. We know we must do that. If asked what we truly need for our students, I could provide you a very long list with a very hefty price tag, but obviously we can't do that. There are some constraints by our state legislature and we are here tonight to ask our community for continued support for our kids and to consider doing it well. We want to ensure less cuts. We want to preserve what we have and at the very minimum, but we believe that our kids deserve more than that. We need extra funding to continue to support our students academically as well as socially and emotionally. We want to continue to provide successful programs like responsive classroom, relationship building, community building, peer mentors, web, link crew, Avid, BAR. All of these are making such a difference for our kids. These programs keep students connected, they increase attendance, they decrease dropout rates and failure rates, and we know the importance of providing our students with learning technology to keep them engaged and connected and make their learning much more relevant. Classroom devices, student and teacher computers, infrastructure, and technology support are critical. Again, we want to preserve and maintain what we have and prevent cuts. We want to ask our community to stretch a bit, to stabilize our budget, to prevent more cuts, to continue to support our kids the way we should. And we believe our community is ready for that. I cannot promise that there won't be more cuts in the future, but I am really, really hoping we can move forward as a united community with supporting our kids and supporting our schools. We know that because of the pandemic, we will need to catch kids up and we know that supporting our students will cost more during the next 10 years and our students deserve what they need. Okay, and with that, I am going to ask you to hold questions until Ellers presents their financial scenarios and information and then I have a recommendation from our leadership team and then we'll take questions. Okay? And here tonight we have our Ellers team. I'll let them go ahead and introduce themselves. Thank you.
Is this on already?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Jody Zasba from Ellers. We were here before Greg and I have presented and I think we told you that there was a third team member and now he's really here, so you can see him live in person. This is Matthew Hammer. So, we will go through some of the information. This format will be familiar to you. We had run some options based upon a certain threshold plus $25 increments for the survey that you did. So now we have some refined numbers before you tonight and I'll just reorient you to the presentation information that we have. We are looking at two questions. So the first question, the operating referendum. Within the expiring authority, you'll notice a new number. We mentioned that when we presented before, we hadn't received new inflationary factors from MDE yet. We did get those new inflationary factors last week. They've recalculated all of the formula allowances statewide that are subject to that inflationary adjustment and now your dollar amount is just slightly higher at $1,307.55. So that is the number that would be a part of your ballot question and that is the number that you would need to include in your ballot question to just get to a renewal point. So then we are looking at options within this scenario that would result in a net change of $125 ultimately in that final column. To get to that, you would renew plus add additional authority, getting you to an allowance of 1,500, oh I'm sorry, $1,642.55, which would be a change of about, an increase of about $335 per pupil. And then we have been looking at the capital project levy authority for technology costs at 4.7 million. The total net change in revenue then would be about 6.9 million. And again, with the reductions in other levies, and that is the program that we talked about, your long-term facilities maintenance program allows you the flexibility to finance your larger capital project costs through bonds as well as pay-as-you-go levies. So this gives you the mix of bonding and pay-as-you-go levies, allowing you to reduce some of your levies and then again, that resulting net change at $125. So the other options that we have are set up with the same format. I'll move on to those. The next option is the same information but resulting in a net change on a residential home of $350,000 at $140. So in this case, you are able to ask for your renewal plus additional authority, getting you to a formula, getting you to an operating referendum allowance that's just slightly under $1,700 or a $390 change, about $2.7 million in additional operating referendum authority, again, the $4.7 million capital project levy for technology costs, and then the net change in revenue here is about $7.4 million. The next option then is an option that gets you to a net change for a homeowner at $350,000 of $150. In this case, you would be asking for your renewal plus additional $425 per pupil. Again, the capital project levy stays the same at the 4.7 million for technology costs and the final net change at $150 on a $350,000 home. Total net change in revenue in this option is 7.7 million. The next option is one that we were asked to take a look at the question for operating referendum at the newly calculated cap. So the state cap was also changed for the new inflation, inflationary factors that MDE has in place and the new cap number is now at $1,881.81. So if you were to access all of the revenue allowed under that formula, you would ask for an increase in the, in your operating referendum authority of $574.26. That would get you new revenue of $4.4 million and without any operating, I'm sorry, without any capital project levy, you would end up with that $4.4 million of new revenue and an tax impact of net change of $53. So that's just putting everything on question one to the extent that the law currently We did run an option to get you to a $7.4 million additional revenue amount using that new cap. So if you were to ask for the operating referendum at the cap and access that $4.4 million, then we added on a capital project levy at $3,500,000 and you can see that the net change there is 7.4 million, consistent with one of the options that we looked at earlier at $140. This is just as a little bit more tax impact on a $350,000 home because the operating referendum is a little bit higher burden on your homeowners as compared to accessing that revenue through a capital project or technology levy. Next, we had your attorney draft some sample ballot language so you could kind of get used to this language because this will be a part of the formal resolution that you'll need to approve to call for the election. So this first question here shows the, the operating referendum question at whatever level you decide to include in that blank. And then it does access, it does reference your new allowance, so that's the newly calculated allowance that's expiring for Stillwater Area Schools at $1,307.55. So that's how that ballot will look for question one and again, depending upon what number you choose for the blank there, we would have the attorney fill in that amount. The next sample ballot question is question two for the capital project levy. You're able to provide more detail to your taxpayers when they're looking at this question. So while the first question on operating referendum is pretty prescribed by statute, I think we mentioned that you have more ability to explain what you'll be using these dollars for. And so this is a description of what those, of what the technology costs, what technology costs would be covered. And certainly this language can be modified, but this is pretty standard for the districts that have capital project levy authority in place. Just wanted to give you a sense for how that would look when you, when your voters see it at the polls. And then I know that we had provided some information on capital project levy for taxes payable in 2020, which was the most recent data that we had when we spoke with you in May, I think it was. We do have updated information now for taxes payable in the current year, 2021, providing revenue to school districts for fiscal year 21-22. So these are all of the districts that have capital project levy authority in place and the tax impact on a $350,000 home in each of these districts. So the list is relatively long and getting longer. More and more districts have improved, have been approving capital project levy authority. And then you can see on the second page of this list, the averages that at the bottom too of the taxes, the levy amounts, the pupils, and then ultimately the average for all of the districts with capital project levy authority in place is about $415 per pupil. As you noticed on the ballot question and as we've talked about before, you don't request this amount from the district on a, from the, from the property owners on a per pupil basis. It's instead a tax rate that's applied against your tax base, but just to give you a sense for how much these districts are accessing on a per pupil basis already for the students in their district. And then just a reminder, I think we've shared this in the past too, but it's helpful, I think, to see this information again. The operating referendum authority that's currently in place for districts in the seven county metro area for the current tax year. And we did asterisk the districts that have the inflation adjustment already as part of their formula. So it gives you a sense for where districts are at. Some districts in this list are grandfathered in at an amount that's higher than the cap based upon legislation that's in place. So you may, you'll see some numbers that are already above that $1,881.81 and that's because of that special language that's in law for them.
And these don't account for the latest inflationary adjustment right now. These are still the old ones.
Correct.
So anybody that has an asterisk is a little bit higher.
Yes, so anybody who has an asterisk would have an adjusted allowance that's a little bit higher. You can see yours has the old allowance on there because these are the amounts that were, that are currently in place for taxes payable in '21 and MDE will go back and adjust those amounts and kind of true those up to the new numbers as part of the taxes payable in 2022 levy process. That's why that levy report that MDE provides to you gets to be 40 pages long with size four font and lots and lots of calculations. So they'll go back and do adjustments now to catch everybody up to their new allowances that they're calculating. And then finally, we wanted to share, I think we had taken a look at the capital project levy versus operating referendum and how the, how those impact your taxpayers differently. So for purposes of this analysis now, I think we had shown you this on a $3 million basis and this now shows you at the cap that you could access for operating referendum revenue, how that compares to taxes on a capital project levy. The one concept that we wanted to make sure that you understood too is on an operating referendum revenue, when you ask for additional authority, you do lose out on some money as part of the state's equity formula. There's no loss in revenue when you're asking for capital project levy revenue, but on an operating referendum revenue, you do lose out on a little bit of equity revenue as your allowance goes up. So we're just showing that net change for operating referendum, even if you would ask for the cap, you would lose some equity revenue as part of that calculation. And then we're showing the resulting tax calculations that would result. So on a $350,000 home, for example, accessing the $4.1 million in revenue is $120, whereas asking for that authority through the operating referendum would be an increase of $137. So it's $17 less on your average value home to access that, those dollars through a capital project levy rather than operating referendum. Just to kind of give you a sense for how that plays out. And then you can see that commercial taxpayers pick up a little bit more of the burden on a capital project levy as well as some of the other taxpayers. But for homeowners, the, the burden is just a little bit higher on an operating referendum.
And the reason it's limited to about $4 million is we wanted to do an apples-to-apples comparison on the revenue and at the cap, that's what you're generating on the operating referendum is about 4 million. So you can't generate 4.7 million on the capital project, or on the operating referendum to compare with the capital project levy because that's not permissible under statute because of the, the cap number.
So with that, I just want to remind our board that we had two tracking surveys completed by Baker Tilly and one, I believe in February. This past survey was completed in June and they came back quite favorable, very favorable with community support. With that said, I do want to cover some external factors that are out of the district's control right now that might have an impact on a referendum between now and November 2nd. We have COVID-19 variants, the Delta variant right now. We don't know what kind of an impact that will have on our school year and our future. We're watching that closely. We have federal COVID-19 federal funds, the CARES Act, some funding coming in and there might be a misconception from the community that that is ongoing funding. It is a one-time fund and it has helped, but it's not going to be there after this following year. We also have the Minnesota's 2021 state legislative session that came out after our June survey was completed with a historical 2.45 and 2% increase. And while that is wonderful, it still does not close the gap of the lack of funding that we have been receiving for our school districts. So that's out in the community. It's great that they did that, but it still does not close the gap. The economy and consumer confidence, the inflation and consumer price index, and then lastly, our district enrollment with the pandemic, that we have seen enrollment loss within our state in public school systems as well as the nation. We hope our students are coming back. We're going to work on getting our students back and we hope we have growth in our community. We're seeing a lot of construction going up, but families are having fewer kids. A lot of those new developments I've seen for the seniors, 55-plus. All that taken into consideration, we had Ellers run these numbers and we've kept them so busy this last week. We provided them some enrollment numbers that are on the conservative end rolling up the numbers. Hazel Reinhardt that did our last demographers study, she has worked with at least six, eight other districts and she said this district enrollment, kids will hopefully eventually come back, but they're not coming back soon. So we want to have the most accurate enrollment numbers or projections that we can provide because if we go too high and the kids aren't there, we could face future cuts later on. So we want to be as accurate as possible with our projections. So with that administration, we want to be responsible with our community ask for this referendum. We would support right now this option on slide five with 140. This would be a question one, replacement levy question for our expiring levy with additional revenue to support our kids. And question two, technology levy, new capital projects levy with 4.7. The second recommendation, you know, would even be possibly more conservative with the 125, but right now we feel good with this 140. That was the sweet spot with, where Don Lipto and Baker Tilly had recommended. But again, if you go back to those external factors, we do want to do this cautiously. And at this time, we would like to have a board discussion and questions because I know this is such a big decision to make.
Okay, thank you very much for that presentation and information. Board members, are there questions?
I just, I want to make sure, which is the recommended option that staff is recommending what, on this?
Well, we've gone back and forth between the 140 and the 125.
It's slide five.
Slide five.
It doesn't match to your last page because we just got it as they walked in. So it's slide five in the earlier presentation and I put it up there again.
Page three. Page three on the handout then. That's correct.
So you said that you went back and forth between the 140 and the 125. Can you tell us a little bit about what your thoughts were on that?
We've talked to other experts out in our community that have worked with this and there's, there's just a lot of caution when you're doing a renewal like this and it's our last chance and we want to be responsible, but we, we felt good with the 140. The, the next choice would be the 125. We're just, we're really concerned about these external factors, but we want to do right by our kids.
What is our cap right now then?
The cap is $1,881.81.
Okay. So with both the, the 140 and the 125 option, we would not go to the cap on the operating with either one of those?
That's correct.
Okay. Do people feel comfortable with the $140? This would, so this would essentially be an increase on a $350,000 home of $140 a year.
It's about $11 a month on a $350,000 home.
Okay, about $11 a month.
A little over 11.
Okay.
And, and it's a bit of a stretch, but we, we believe our community is behind us and, with all of these factors, with inflation, enrollment, and everything else, we want to do right by our kids.
Katie.
Thanks. I'm trying to process. This is a lot of really good information. I really appreciate.
I really appreciate all the different scenarios and kind of crunching all the numbers for us. I guess my question is more for Melinda and looking at if we do, we are going to be asking the community for for an increase, hopefully. What what do you foresee? Is this going to be enough? You kind of alluded to probably not, but what what are we going to preserve? What are we going to get for the increased ask if we decide to go that route?
If we did not pass a simple renewal, it could mean cuts of on average, a little over 140 teachers to put it in perspective. And class size, class, student teacher ratio, our interventions and supports, our activities, extra programming, all of that would be on the table for the board to decide. It would be significant. Moving forward with a slight increase, we know with inflation and supporting students, it costs more every year. And then with our enrollment being unstable with the pandemic, we don't know what that's going to look like. If our our enrollment right now is a little over 8,000 students, I believe, that's lower than what we've had and that is funding coming in or not coming in. And so that has a significant impact too. If we increase just a little bit, we are hoping to preserve those cuts. We're hoping to maintain what we have. We also, as I mentioned earlier, made three budget cuts during this last eight years with $7 million. We would love to bring some of that back. We know we can't bring all of it, but there are some critical pieces that support our students. And then we know that we would like to provide more for students. We can talk about the tech levy. I I believe our families and communities members realize how important that has been through this pandemic and and how that can support students too.
Is there a fundamental difference between the 125 and 140 in what would be preserved? Like, why, why did you guys decide on the 140 number?
We went with 140 because we believe our community can stretch a little bit. We believe that the support is there. We just want to be cautious with all of the external factors that are out there that we can't control. But the the survey was very positive for our community supporting that. And we want to be really responsible with how we spend that money. We know we need to be very transparent, but we also know that our kids deserve this. And like I mentioned earlier, we could create a very long list with needs, with a very big price stack, so.
Thank you.
And one of the things that I just wanted to point out when you were talking about the $7 million of cuts that have been made since we passed the last operating levy in 2013, you know, we need to also, the community, I hope the community recognizes that we get the vast majority of our funding from the state. And the operating levy in contrast provides, what, 11% or 12% of our budget? And so it isn't really possible for us to be able to use a local levy at only 11% of the budget to make up for funding from the state that has been a little lagging at times. I mean, we know that the the state budgets have have gone up and down over the years and there have been years when we have gotten no increase from, not only have we gotten no increase from the state, but they have actually essentially borrowed money from the districts by moving back the time when they would actually pay us. And so then we had to use our reserves to be able to pay bills and things of that sort. So I just want the community to understand that we're not solving all of the district's budget problems with the local levy. We are, because we get so much money percentage-wise from the state. But, you know, increased support from our community will go a long way toward helping us maintain that even keel. And, you know, that that is, that's essentially what an operating levy does, a local operating levy. Tina?
So piggybacking off on what you were saying, increased support from our community will help us maintain academic decline. I mean, I'm really, I have a hard time with all of this. I really, really do because I hear, you know, if we go back to the beginning where we're talking about investing in kids, catching up because of the pandemic, we've been in an academic decline since the last levy. The community handed over money and we went downhill since. What are we going to get for the community spending more on this levy? All we have is what administration brings forward with our plans. World's best workforce, read well by third grade. Our expectations have dwindled. We have gone backwards in academics. And so I don't want to maintain what we have. I want better than what we have. And I am very frustrated that, it doesn't matter how many times I try to give my message, it's ignored, it's pushed away and there's some other entity or some other thing that is coming up ahead of academics in this district. I honestly would like to see a breakdown of all of your programs and what they cost. I want to see what we spent since the last levy on all these new initiatives that we have. We've had $7 million in cuts over the last several years. There's a reason for that. This year alone, we're up in in April, over $4 million in spending. And so I have a huge issue with what is going on in this district right now and I wish more people did that sit at this table for accountability on on what we are providing to our our community. So I I'm struggling.
We will be providing information on that and I know over the years, our standards have changed, the testing has changed, we have made cuts and I can guarantee if we continue to make cuts, we will not be able to support our kids the way that we should be. If we are in that cut cycle, we will be focused. I'm worried that if if this doesn't pass, we just came out of a pandemic and we've had to really focus on that. We want to get back into the academic realm. We want to get back into student achievement. We know we need to focus on that. We need to have the capacity for that. If this does not pass at a minimum, we will be in that cut cycle and our capacity will be focused on that. Unfortunately, not on the kids like it should be. We need that to be in place.
I want to see you come with better plans.
And we are working on that.
But it's passed.
But we are working on that.
This board just approved 59% of third graders will read.
And I would like to bring comparables from other metro area districts over time.
No, no.
And I would like to.
We're on Stillwater, so I I am frustrated. We're asking the Stillwater taxpayers for 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 their hard-earned money and it makes a difference in their home. And we, are we discussing, you know, the the money that we've already done, the the non-approved money that we've taken, the $64 there that is going to be added on to this between OPEB, Q Comp and Brookview? I'm having a hard time today.
Annie?
Thank you, Chair Petrie. Thank you to the MS group for your presentation and thanks to Linda and her team for also giving us the presentation that you did. I think we have two options here. There's a reason why we sit here as a representation of our community. The first one is either the community doesn't pass the levy and we lose half of our teachers or more than half of our teachers and academic progress is actually declines continuously. We continue to go back to what was or we're looking to the future as mature adults, extremely brilliant and smart adults to think of what's best for our kids right now. Or we work at passing the levy because at the center of it all, our children are the reason why we're here. So if we continue to speak about the past instead of looking to the future as to what is the present, then we're only trying to kill the institution in which our children learn. It is up to us, it is up to the community. If you don't want to pass the levy, it's up to all of us. Our children will suffer. It is still about our children. Our personal grudges or personal vendetta should have nothing to do with the successes that we need in this district. And I repeat, it is still our children. We're not the only ones in a bucket right now. We have other schools within Woodbury and Stillwater, such as Woodbury and Eastridge. Sure, they have their own issues, but I doubt if anyone is actually advocating for the levy not to pass if they have one coming up. Because guess what? Our teachers will be out of a job. Our children would not have the support they need and they might be the warts for it. So it's up to us again. You want to look back or you want to look to the future? That is why the community put us here, for us to be able to do what is right and move ahead and make sure the community benefits and our children can compete appropriately. Thank you.
Allison? On your, on page three on the hard copy handouts, I'm looking at the question one, the operating levy and the net change is $77. So am I reading that right? So on a residential household of 350,000, it'd be about, you would take 77 divided by 12. So it would be about an additional $6.42 a month. Okay, just so I'm clear. And then the question two for the operating levy, that's where the bulk of the ask is coming from to get to that 140. So I guess my question for the superintendent is, let's say question one is passes and question two wasn't to pass. What are the implications in that happening here? I mean, are we talking about still being able to maintain, preserve and protect at that $77, that's $6.42 more if question two doesn't pass? Because I guess I just, I think in our community, I'm not saying that's right or wrong, it's just we've always used the operating levy to do the the funding, the local levy, the local funding for our schools. So it's a, it's a shift and I get the tax benefit and I like that for our taxpayers that it's actually costing them a little less, you know, to do it on the tech levy, but I do fear the tech levy if it weren't to pass, that we could be losing out on revenue that the community in the survey that we have, and I like to kind of follow that survey data, is telling us they're willing to spend in our schools and they see value in supporting our schools and our students. So we could kind of be losing that, I guess.
Yeah, if we just pass the first question, we're hoping that we can maintain for a while, but again, there are a lot of external factors and a lot of unknowns and it would be tight. And I cannot guarantee that there would not be more cuts because of these external factors and our enrollment is going to play a huge part in that as well. But we we really want to try and prevent more cuts. We are lean. We still have a lot of programming that has not been brought back with the $7 million in previous cuts. We would like to preserve some of those and we would, we know that supporting our students coming out of a pandemic is going to take a lot of resources. And the tech levy, it's pretty broad with where we can put that funding, but it puts a name to, it's tangible with what we're asking the community to pay for and support. And we can see that the students will really benefit from that and there has been some support out in the community. But we cannot guarantee that there won't be more cuts, but we are hoping that that would maintain and preserve what we have. What some other districts have had to do, they've had to go out early if it's not enough for another levy, which we really don't want to have to do. It's a lot of work and it's taxing our community. So this, we felt like it it would give us some breathing room and we do want to be respectful for what we ask our community to support.
And I guess if I could just, I want to, I want to stress again the catastrophe that would happen if we weren't to at least renew the operating levy. So I agree with you wholeheartedly. I am, I really want a renewed focus on our students and on their achievement and on their social, emotional wellbeing coming out of a pandemic. I want to focus on all of that. I think that we have to lose, we can't lose sight of how we are in the situation that we're in. We have an interim superintendent who's doing a wonderful job trying to keep up with a lot of work that was postponed and delayed by past decisions. We are trying to take care of our students. We're trying to move forward, but I think that the best way when we, I guess for me, I would like achievement to be talked about in every board throughout the years. I think that, I don't know how it meant achievement to basically blow up our entire administration during a pandemic. I don't know how that helped achievement. And I get, I want so desperately to focus on solutions moving forward, but I, I can't sit here and take the criticism when some can't look in the mirror on their own actions and how it impacted where we are today. And that's just, that's how I feel. We we have to stop looking back. We have to start rebuilding. Decisions were made, we don't want to revisit it, but we have to be rebuilding together for our students.
Katie?
Kind of going off what Allison just was talking about, I've done a lot of thinking since this, we got our survey results last week and trying to wrap my mind around what the community is willing and hopefully able to do to support our schools and thinking about how much things have changed in the last year on a fundamental educational level around the entire nation, around the world, quite frankly, and how much we don't know where those changes are going to take us. And one factor that I'm hit with every week is my grocery bill keeps going up and all of, like, everything we buy is going up. The inflation piece is hitting hard right now. It's hitting families hard and recognizing that it's going to hit our schools too. And education is going to continue to cost more. Everything costs more. And looking at how are we going to be supporting our kids after a very difficult year of being at home, transitioning back and forth, doing hybrid learning, having our teachers stretched in ways that they've never been stretched before? And how is that going to play out in each individual kid's educational journey as every single one is now going to be educated in a post-pandemic world? And looking at all of those factors, I am so encouraged by what our surveys seem to be pointing us in the direction that our community recognizes that and they want to step up and help. And quite honestly, the pandemic is going to set us back and those academic achievement goals that were looking hopeful before the pandemic, unfortunately, are going to have to be reevaluated, quite honestly, because life got blown up last year. And yes, we might have to adjust our goals in a, in a new way, but what I want really all of us to focus on is that progress because kids need to know that even if they're not advancing as far as we would like or how fast they used to advance, that we still support them and we want them to continue to move forward and not to fault them for things that were beyond their control. So I am super hopeful that our community will continue to support our schools and get behind this levy. And it sounds like from the, from the data that we're receiving, that that is the message that is coming through, at least at this point. And I am incredibly encouraged by that and I'm hopeful that by following that lead, that we can do better by our kids after this pandemic.
Tina?
The state of our, our children's academic place at this time is not the fault of our It is, it is the fault of our leadership. It is the fault of of the way things are, things aren't accountable. This isn't anything that has happened since COVID. This has been going on before COVID. Director Sherman, you can't have it both ways. You can't talk about the past and then criticize me about the past and then say you want to move on. You have to do one or the other, quite frankly. And the only way we learn to move on is from the past. And I want to know what has changed in the last 10 years. I want to know what we're doing different that we have this decline. And as I'm talking with the superintendent about my unhappiness with academics, which I've talked about since I've ran for office, this isn't something new I've never talked about in the past. I didn't criticize the board at all that was sitting here, but hence, if you want to talk about it, we, let's talk about the 4.2% raise, the $2 extra million that that were given away in salaries. We were up in, in April, $4 million. I don't know what we're up to now, above. I don't know what we're up to now, above our spending last year. I mean, I'm, I'm not in these weekly meetings with the superintendent and assistant superintendent. I don't know what's discussed in these meetings. I know when I was in those meetings last year, we were very conservative with our financial discussions and, and making sure that we were on track because we saw COVID coming. So you can't have it both ways. And this conversation isn't new. And at what point does change happen? At what point do we take changing the academic decline in this district seriously? When? When? We just got our presentation. Guess what? It's not a good one.
Well, I would just, I would just mention with that four million, the, the reason why our expenses are up four million over last year is that, yes, we did settle the teacher's contract, which had not been settled up to that point. And we were essentially the last district in the state not to settle. So that, that probably explains a big chunk of, of the difference between last year's budget and this year's budget. Allison.
I would love Director Riley to make an agreement that if you don't look back, I won't look back. I felt the need to respond there because you were reflecting back in history. I would look like nothing more than to work with you for the benefit of all of our students. I genuinely want to work with you to rebuild this district. I want to stop talking about the past and being critical of one another and come together for our students. I absolutely agree with you on achievement. I just don't think that depriving our students of critically needed funding is going to get the result that you want. I, I really think we need to hold our staff accountable and we need, and I'm with you on that. I, I genuinely am. But I just fundamentally agree, think that we need to have this funding. So just really quick, because I want to get back to this information. On page six of the handout. This gives us the same amount of money, like with, I think, two dollars more, one hundred and forty-two. But it puts more on question one than on question two, than on the tech levy. I guess I would like to know, because the amount is the same, like where, if, if anyone has any strong reaction to putting the majority of the funding on the operating levy question or on the tech question? So again, it was page six compared to page three in the handouts. I just wanted to get.
Right.
Because I still have that concern that the operating levy, if the operating levy were to pass, and that has the stronger support in, in the Baker-Tilly survey, that if, if one question passes, I still go to this. Are we going to lose critically needed funding?
Sorry.
Yeah. Katie, did you have a response to that?
Well, I'm just, it kind of triggered me to have a question, actually from Melinda. Is there a reason why this scenario, like, is it, you're recommending the one forty is what you guys landed on? How did you choose the one forty over this one? Is it, is it because of the two dollar increase? Or was there another reason that factored into recommending the one forty versus the, this last option that Allison was bringing up with the one forty-two?
Yeah. Believe it just gives our community a little bit more of a, a choice. It's a pretty big increase if they're just voting for question one. It goes up to four point three. And that gets us up to, what, sixteen?
That's at the cap, actually, Melinda?
It's right there, all the way.
All the way to the cap.
Yeah. And historically, taking an operating levy all the way to the cap is very tough to pass.
Does it need to go all the way up to the cap? Is there a way to bring it down a little bit so it's not at the cap?
Well, I mean, you'd be looking then at option, like I was looking at option number four. I'm sorry. Page four in this packet, where it, the increase, it goes up to one point, one thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-five cents, which is less than the cap. I mean, I'm, I also am a little bit concerned about going all the way up to the cap. You know, that's a hefty increase, I think. And so, you know, I am just, I just have concerns about that, I guess. Annie?
Thank you. You know, truthfully, if you look at the math, it really doesn't make sense to, to go with number six, page six. Because the net change there for page three is seven million four twenty-eight. And the net change for page six is seven million four oh four, with one forty-two. And that's at the cap. And so we have a disadvantage there based on what your presentation was, if we move to the cap. So it really doesn't make sense if you look at, if we do the comparison, at least seeing the difference in terms of what the net change will be. And the benefit we get from page three is against page six if you go up to the cap. So you're losing something on page six. So I don't know, maybe they will help explain it better there. That's what I see here. So for me, I think page, page three will be a bit more ideal, where we don't go up to the cap, but we still have a net change that is pretty decent.
If we pass both questions?
Yes.
Yes. Correct.
If we don't pass the, the second question, then in, on the, page six, the operating levy is giving us a hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Whereas if we don't pass the first question, or sorry, sorry, second question, on the other scenario on page three, we only get a hundred, or sorry, we only get seventy-seven dollars. So it's that, if that question two does not pass, the tax impact seems to be very similar, one forty-two to one forty. But if that question two doesn't pass, it'll have a huge impact on what we are actually able to get on our operating levy. So I think that, that might be where Allison was.
Yes. I'm just, I'm just, you know, seeing all the external factors, which I totally agree. I also think we have some factors working to our advantage, to be honest, too. I mean, I think people have, like Director Hockert said, people have seen how much schools do for students. They've also seen maybe that we could have responded better if we had some more technology and that, that technology for learning is only, it's not going away. It's only going to be more. But I guess I'm just, I'm weighing in my own head, if you want to know where I'm at, just the balance between, I'm not, I'm not objecting to the, the fact that there's the hundred and forty. And I want to be sensitive to taxpayers, and I know the tax efficiency in doing the tech levy. I just worry if we only pass question one and, and just preserving. I just want to preserve and protect what we're doing for our students as best we can.
So the quest, sorry.
Can I have, Melinda wanted to respond here. I just want to reiterate, we have to pass at, at very minimum, you know, a renewal, because this, if question one does not pass, it's going to look very, very different. We're very, very concerned about what programming, staffing. It's critical that we have something pass. And this scenario does not take us to the cap. It gives more leeway for voters that are concerned about that to make a choice. And we feel like that's breathable. We also believe that the tech levy was supported in our survey. We know it's important coming off of a pandemic. And with that, we can make that tangible. People know what they are voting for. They know exactly what they're going to get. Where the operating levy, it goes into the general fund, and we can show them programming, but things change and it's a little bit more fluid. Where the tech levy, it, people know what they're getting. So that's, that's a positive there. Melinda, we just have a couple more minutes left before we start our regular board meeting. Are, are you, what are you hoping to get from us yet during this work session? I would hope that we can get some type of indication or consensus that people would be, or our board would be willing to put this out for a vote, for ballot questions on August twelfth. If we're in the ballpark here, would like to continue to firm up numbers and have ballot questions ready to go for a vote. Everything is due by August twentieth, so we need to get this done. Okay. Annie?
Yeah, just a quick one here. So thank you, Director Hockert, for clarifying that. So looking at this, though, are we thinking, are you thinking of putting both of them together? Or you're thinking of separating both the operational levy, the operating levy and the tech, technology levy? What is the plan? Is it to tie it together or to separate? Because if we're separating, I, I think Director Sherman and Director Hockert's points with respect to page six is, is ideal. But if we're not separating, then we're looking at three. But I think it's important for us to, really, the community already knows the challenges we faced during the pandemic. So it's important for us to also present that with true transparency as to the importance of the technology levy. Again, as a district, a district as rich as ours, personally, I don't think this should be a problem. The data actually shows that the support is there. And I think we should take pride in knowing that compared to other districts, this is not a lot. However, it's still something. It's a lot of money still regardless. But I think we should take pride in knowing that we can afford to provide, even if it doesn't provide all of what we're looking for, that we can afford to provide something for our kids. Last year showed it. It showed the pain that parents went through and a lot of our kids went through. Director Riley talked about the achievement gap, talked about progress. A lot of the progress or lack of it was because of the pandemic. And part of it, too, was because of the distance learning and kids not being able to learn because of the deficiencies we had with respect to technology. So it's up to us as a community, it's up to us as a parents, with what we went through last year as part of the progress we're looking for, to really look at what's best for our children. Again, like I said, like everyone has said here, it's our responsibility. If we don't want to pass it, our kids will continue to suffer. But if we want to compete, if we want the best for our children, then we will give them what it is that we think is best for them.
Briefly?
Yes.
Allison.
If we decide on the amount, I know that at one point in time when Baker-Tilly was selected, they mentioned a third survey, and I forget what they called it. Are we thinking we need that third survey? And how would that work? I mean, if you, I don't, and so I guess that would be a question I would have, not obviously for the next two minutes. But it's just something, I know it was out there as an option. I haven't heard that we're, we think we need to do that. But I just wanted to say, like, what if you did that third survey and you, and we decide on an, an amount or on a package? And the community feedback changes? We can't change that ballot, like, that ballot language is firm, correct? So.
I believe so after August twentieth.
Just quickly, the third survey's more for messaging. It's called the brush fire survey, and you do it in September-ish to find out if you need to change messaging. You can't change ballot question at that point.
Okay, thank you. That was, that's what I assumed.
That has been suggested because there are, again, so many external factors between now and November second that could affect this. And that's why we're more comfortable making a recommendation with this slide number three. Okay. Well, I, we're going to have to move on to our regular board meeting. Thank you so much for all this information. I know you worked really hard to get this ready for us. It seems to me that, that the, the recommendation that we have here is in sync with the, what we learned from the surveys that were done by Baker-Tilly. And I think that board members are just going to have to think about this a little bit. But I do believe that on August twelfth, we are going to come with a, a recommendation with a, with something for us to be able to decide on. And obviously, you know, we, we are missing a couple of board members right now. And so I don't know that we can really come to a consensus at this point anyway, because we're missing those folks. But I do think that this has given us something to sort of, hopefully, we will be able to kind of congeal around something that is in the ballpark of what you've recommended. And we'll have that, that action then on August twelfth. So members of the public have anything that they want to weigh in on? There's a couple of weeks for you to do that. So, so we'll end the work session right now, and we'll take a very brief break. And then we will start our regular board meeting. Thank you, everyone. I call to order this meeting of Stillwater Area Public Schools, ISD 834, school board meeting for July 22nd, 2021. Joan, can you please call the roll?
Director Hawker?
Here.
Director Anken? Director Poorbenny?
Yeah.
Director Riley?
Here.
Director Sherman?
Here.
Director Weisberg?
Here.
Chair Petrie?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. We'll say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The district mission statement. Is that me?
Mission is here.
Board goals. Okay.
The mission of Stillwater Area Public Schools, in partnership with students, family, and community, is to develop curious individuals who are active and engaged leaders in an ever-changing world by challenging all students as they travel along their personalized learning pathways.
Thank you. School board goals?
In partnership with community, parents, and students, this, excuse me. The school board of Stillwater Area Public Schools ensures excellence in education by increasing student achievement for all students, securing long-term financial stability of the district, and increasing community trust and engagement.
Thank you. We need a motion to approve the agenda. Director Sherman, is there a second? Director Hawker? All those in favor of approving the agenda, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next item is open forum. Those who wish to speak to the school board will be able to do so in the beginning of the board meeting during open forum. You must sign up to speak. You may sign up only for yourself, not other individuals or groups, and only in person. The signup sheet is made available at the Oak Park Building 30 minutes prior and up to the start of the meeting. Due to time limitations, we will limit the number of speakers to 15, who may speak for three minutes each. If you spoke at the last meeting, please consider allowing others to sign up before you. When your name is called, please approach the podium and state your name and address, including town, before you begin your remarks. Please pay attention to the timer, who will hold up cards indicating when you are approaching the end of your time. When time is called, you may finish your sentence. After you address the board, please leave the podium. Stillwater Area Public Schools District 834 welcomes input from citizens as community involvement on the issues facing our district fosters better decision-making and improved learning experiences for all students. While comments and questions are welcome during open forum, law prohibits the board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in a public meeting. We will stop the proceedings immediately if employee or student privacy issues are raised and direct the speaker to forward comments regarding individual employees or students to the superintendent. We welcome discussion of the issues, but will not tolerate the targeting of individual staff or students by name, position, or implication. Because we are modeling civil discourse for our community, speakers must present their testimony in a respectful manner. Vulgarity, character attacks, or malice will not be tolerated. The board will not deliberate, discuss, or engage in conversation with speakers during open forum. However, the board may ask administration to review the concerns presented. We have three speakers tonight. The first speaker can approach the podium, and that is Amy Martin. And the next speaker after is Sandy Heiner. So Amy, just to let you know, Allison is going to have the timer cards over here. So you can watch her over here, okay? All right, thank you.
Sounds good, thank you. My name's Amy Martin. My address is 163367 St. Lane, South Lakeland. Can't hear myself say my name. Number one fear is public speaking, number two is death. So I guess people would rather die than sit in public. But here I am. I identify as a mom. You wouldn't maybe know that by looking at me, but I smell like a mom. But it's all good. I'm here. I just want to tell a quick story about why I oppose your levy. More money doesn't always mean a better experience for the kids or their families. Approving more money doesn't always equate to a better education. About six months ago, I called a mom friend of mine. And I said, is anybody doing anything about everything that's going on? Because she's kind of like into the protesting and all that kind of stuff. And she's like, yeah, actually, go, go look at CPLaction.com. I was like, okay. So I looked at it and I'm like, man, this stuff can't be true. This stuff can't be true. This stuff can't be true. I didn't want it to be true. But then I started interviewing principals in the district, interviewing kindergarten teachers. And I started getting really, really concerned, concerned for my kids. I've got three of them. And then I thought, you know, even if I wasn't in public schools with my kids, I'd still be really concerned for my community and for the future, in the direction of things that are going. So there's a few reasons why I oppose the levy. I just don't trust that the district is doing things in a way that's transparent and really in the best interest of growing fine humans. Supporting parents, supporting families, and the values that we teach our kids at home. Education shouldn't really be like controversial, you know? Let's teach math, let's teach academics, let's teach people to value one another as human beings, as individuals. Let's teach kindness, let's teach respect. Let's teach it in a way that doesn't violate parents' right to, you know, instill virtues in their, in their children and have them be respected when they go to public school. Critical race theory? Let's not, I heard someone say this and it was perfect. Let's not fault kids for things that are beyond their control, skin color being one of them, right? Let's teach a mindset of ownership. Let's grow victors, not victims. CSE, comprehensive sex education. My babies, I got to protect my kids. Social emotional learning, it sounds good, right? The website, Castle, it sounds really good. But then when you see who funds Castle, I mean, who really trusts Bill Gates? The Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, major funder, the Novo Foundation. I mean, this started putting like hair on the back of my neck. To know that these people are really interested in influencing my children and their values. Academic performance is on the decline. And what's up with the 5G tower over at the junior high? I really would like follow up on that. That is super alarming to know that there's a 5G tower right, right where the school is. So I look forward to hearing why that's there and what the safety studies are. So thank you so much for your time. Maybe listen to the recording so it's not so distracting. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Sandy Heiner, and after that, Heidi Adam.
Hello, my name is Sandy Heiner, Stillwater, Minnesota. So I wanted to talk about academics because I got cut off last time. But after sitting through that last hour, I have some different thoughts. So, you guys are talking about the levy. You've described the $140 per $350,000 house per year as the sweet spot. So let's talk about that. You had a survey recently, and one of the most interesting parts of that survey, where you say that you have quite favorable, right, support for the levy. You had this chart, and it shows that at $125 an increase, you only have 63%. And that's with that 5% margin of error, right? At 150, you're down to 57. You go to 175, you drop down less than 50%. And you get to $200 a year increase, and you've dropped down to 36%. I don't think that's quite favorable. And those numbers go even lower in your more active older voters. So I wonder why, when you had that survey and you wanted to influence them and make them informed, right, to increase their support for the levy, you did not tell them about the Brookview non-voter approved levy, about the OPAB, and about the Q comp, because that's $64 added on now to that sweet spot of 240. So 240 is wiped out. Now you're up to 204, on top of the $1,100 that the average taxpayer in that 350K house already pays to you, right? So now you have less, if you're going off these numbers, less than one-third of the community would support that had you been honest with them about what that price tag really was. Less sweet, little more sour, but wait, there's more. Because in the spring, you're coming for a bond for a quarter of a billion dollars, which I've noticed on your calendar, you will not be discussing until after people vote for the levy, when they falsely believe that they're only increasing their taxes by $140. So that bond, right, the, the bond that you just took out in 2015 for $97 million costs those taxpayers in the 250K house $240 a year for the next 20 years. So we're, we've still got 15 years left on that sucker. And then you're coming for another bond, and you want a quarter of a billion dollars, jacking that up to over $550 a year increase to those people for the next, what, 20 years again? So now we're up to the 754, on top of the 1,100 they already pay. And I think we've left a sweet spot entirely. And now you want to sell buildings real quick before you get to the levy so that when the bond comes around, you have this crisis, right, of, oh, we need, we need space, as you sell things that we've already bought for you. And so you're not being honest. The district wasn't honest. The last time you came to us with the bond, you betrayed people. You're not doing it now. It's an issue of trust. And Annie, if you want my money, you got to earn it. You don't demand it, okay? That's very entitled of you. You don't scold people and say they better do this, or it means this about them. That's not how this works. You don't shut down in-depth conversation where people want to have accountability for where those dollars went. And you might just want to humble yourself a little bit, because 70% of the taxpayers in this district don't have kids in these schools. You don't get to demand anything. You get to ask politely and then say, thank you, or we'll do better. Thanks again. Have a good night.
The next person on our list is Heidi Adam, and then DeeDee Armstrong.
Heidi Adams, Stillwater, Minnesota. I want to bring your attention to a public post that I, I became aware of recently. It says, "With all their so-called superior education with no black students in their classes from them days, how many of these racist heads have added any value to their families, community, or country? How many of them have solved scientific or economic problems? They don't even believe in environmental issues, so I won't go there. How many have come up with one value add to the development of Stillwater/Bayport/Afton? They sit in their woodworm-infested wooden houses with their mediocre education and Walmart experiences and make statements like, 'I wish the schools were the way they were when we went to school.' Ignorant clowns, born, bred, live and die in one place, idiots." Who would say this? I'll tell you who. Dr. Annie Poorbenny. She said this and posted this on Facebook. And I'm thoroughly insulted. This is disgusting and racist. You want my money? And you insult me and call me stupid? And, and all the people that put you here in this place, you work for us. You ask us politely for our money? You don't get it, and to jump off of what Sandy said, you don't get it by demanding and insulting people. You're not getting my money unless you ask humbly and you apologize for this. This is ridiculous. I am a product of this, of this school district. I'm a proud pony from 1989. And that school district was not like this when I went to school here. And I brought my children here four years ago. And my husband, who didn't grow up here, allowed me to dictate where my children were going to go to school. My mother was an educator in this school district for over 30 years. I love this school district, and you're taking it down. Bring it back up. Accountability, academic, academic achievement is important. And not insulting the residents of the district. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
And finally, DeeDee Armstrong.
DeeDee Armstrong, Afton, Minnesota. Oh, I don't get it started two minutes. Jiminy Christmas, Allison.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, DeeDee.
Get it back. DeeDee Armstrong, Afton, Minnesota. Two meetings ago, you as a board decided to vote to set a goal of 59% of third graders being able to be proficiently reading. You sent, submitted that to the state. You voted on it because administration brought it to you right before the deadline. It is not appropriate thing for administration to so lack calendar management that they dictate to you that we have to submit it, otherwise we're going to lose $343,000. You all voted for that and basically sold out. You looked at a classroom of 10 kids and you said, four of them are fine failing. We're good with that because we want that $343,000. That's gross. 59% reading proficiency in a high school, if you got 59%, that's a failing grade. And you all decided, that's, let's aim for the stars, let's get 59%. The last time you came to the voters with a levy was in 2013. At that time, we got the bridge to excellence, and our reading proficiency was 74.2. Since then, every year it's dropped down. Every year we set a lower goal, and every year we come in under the goal we set. So even though we set a 59%, I'm not going to see us hit it because we set a 60 goal previously, and we came in at 57. So I, holding people accountable, it doesn't exist in this district. We gave a lot of money on the last levy. In fact, in 2013, the general fund expenditures were $92.5 million. Adjusted for inflation on a cumulative basis, that should come out to $108 million. Our current budget for 2021 was 114. We're exceeding the rate of inflation. You're adding programs, but you're not adding proficiency. If I have a neighbor who has a gambling problem, who comes to me to borrow money to feed their children, and I give it to them and they gamble it, I don't give them money the next day. You are asking me to gamble because you're gambling with these children. That is incomprehensible to me that you would say, yep, let's go and ask people for money when we have failed the children. And for the administration to sit and say that we're going to do right by our children? We are not doing right by them when we can't get third graders, when we say four out of 10 third graders don't need to read in this district? That's embarrassing. And there is no reason that I will support this levy, and I will tell everyone I know not to support it based on performance. You don't give money to gamblers.
Item on our agenda is superintendent's report. Superintendent Landsfeld.
Hey, thank you Chair Petrie and Board Directors. On Monday, Governor Tim Walz and Commissioner Heather Mueller visited our extended school year programming at Oakland Middle School. They were even able to participate in a math lesson on percentages, and were shooting some fun baskets with the kids. The extended school year summer programming that Governor Walz and Commissioner Mueller observed is just one of the ways we're supporting our students. ESY is designed to address and support skills retention, and we know how critical this is after the impacts of the pandemic. Along with the ESY summer programming, our district also offers a really unique summer success program for elementary students, and it's a hands-on program that makes learning really fun and engaging. And we have high school students working alongside our professional educators as part of our diversifying the teaching pathway. Stillwater student leaders were interviewed, hired by the district, and attended our teacher professional development, collaborated with their grade level teaching teams writing curriculum, and they are currently working alongside our elementary kids. And we're just excited to be able to present more information on that at a later date. Commissioner Mueller has also offered to come out and visit to learn more about that program. July, in July, the boys lacrosse team placed fourth in their first-ever state tournament appearance. appearance, finishing the season 15 to 4. The number-one-ranked girls golf team placed sixth overall. They finished with a two-day total of 677, or 336 to 341. On the boys team, Henry Lawrence competed at state individually. The number-one-ranked softball team lost to Forest Lake 8 to 5 in the Class AAAA State Quarterfinals, and it was just their second loss of the season, 23 to 2. And the top-seeded baseball team lost to Minnetonka 6 to 5 in eight innings in the state quarterfinals, and the Ponies finished the season with a 20 to 5 record. We've been doing an amazing job with our athletic teams. Anna Weaver won the state title in the 3,200-meter race, and she set a new personal and school record, running a 10, 15, 27, which was more than six seconds faster than the second-place finisher. Congratulations, Anna. And we have Stillwater Area High School senior page Clement Hagen, that was named a Triple Threat Award finalist by the Hannipan Theater Trust, and she was recognized by the Trust Spotlight Education Program for her singing, acting, and dancing. And finally, a quick reminder about community education. We have your good man Charlie Brown that was presented this past week, and you still have a chance to see Incident at San Bajo. It runs July 23rd through 25th. And with that, that's my superintendent report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. The first item is minutes of July 8th business meeting, dispersment register, accept gifts and donations, transfer of restricted funds, Youth Services Bureau Incorporated 2021 to 2022 agreements, approval of Realtor RFQ, Stillwater Middle School water mitigation, orchestra field trip approval form for Chicago, and Human Resources Personnel Report. Director Riley.
I'd like to pull F, please.
Okay.
I'd like to pull B and I.
Okay. Okay. Director Riley, would you like to go first with F, is the approval of the Realtor RFQ?
Yes, I would like to separate this out to its own vote. I am in disagreement of this. I voted against this at the last meeting. As you just heard in the open forum by community members, selling the building that taxpayers own free and clear already, and the focus right now has been on the levy, and the community is not aware that you'll be coming for more money in the spring. While we ask for the, you know, the, the district will be asking for the full appetite from the community for the levy amount that will leave nothing left when you come in the spring for the bond, and you'll be creating a crisis situation on purpose by selling buildings that the community owns, now claiming that there isn't any room. So I would like this separate to vote from the consent agenda, please.
Director Riley, we already accepted the agenda. I am not sure that we have the wherewithal to be able to move this to be something else on the agenda at this point.
I don't want to move it away. I want it just separate. I want it on its own. Do you want to vote for this or not in part of the consent agenda? Otherwise, I'll just vote against the entire consent agenda.
Okay. Director Weisberg, did you want to talk about your items?
Yes. On the dispersment register, on page nine, is another bus garage expense for $5,000, remote bus parking. There's another one is page 13, fall transportation management. Does that relate to the bus garage? Page 13, fall transportation management, $15,000.
No, I don't think that's related to the bus park.
Okay, so the, the other one was remote bus parking for 5,000. And then there was page 14, bus garage sprinkler system, $24,94, I believe. And I had asked at the last meeting if we could get a revised list of bus expenses. I was told we would get that during our closed session that we had earlier today, but then we didn't get anything. And then I was told that I would not receive that, that list. And I'm very curious why not. And I made it clear when we discussed with our attorney, although we can't discuss things that were said in the closed session relating to the ongoing litigation, the expenses that taxpayers are paying for, we can discuss. So I was told I would get a list, and then I was told I'm not going to get a list. So I am requesting we get an updated list on all expenses paid for the bus terminal at the next meeting, please.
Chair.
That's it.
Director Sherman.
This is off-topic of the dispersments, but I would just request from administration and the board chair that if we're going to talk about the bus garage, that we perhaps have a work session that identifies and evaluates the project more than costs. That the project was more in cost, and there's key learnings to make from that project. So I guess I'd like to take a full look at the project and not just focus on the cost. Whether it's after litigation has settled or what have you, I think the community deserves to understand the Pamela Harris report when we can and the full scope of the project. But I do think we're off dispersments at this point.
Yeah, and my, my point is, if I can't even get them, and then we can't be honest with the community about it, that's not transparent in any way.
Well, I think that Allison, I think that Director Sherman has a point in the sense that we are coming to the end of this bus terminal saga, but there are some important pieces of information that are in the works right now.
Right, but we could still get a list of what the expenses are now, because what we told the public, and we're asking them for more money again, was we were only going to spend $3.5 million, and we're nearing $8 million at this point.
Right, but we are hopeful that, that a number will go down. And so that is part of what our discussion was today during the closed session.
But we're not going to go down from where we, what we've already spent, and the public has a right to know that. And I have a right to know it, and I shouldn't be told, no, we're not going to give you that information. That's not transparent.
Director Riley.
I just want to reinforce Director Weisberg. She has a right to that information. There should be no withholding information. When a board member asks for information, the same thing has happened to me during these past six months. So I would appreciate if Director...
We are so off dispersments.
You are so point of order.
We are so off of dispersments. This is a business meeting.
You double talk.
This is a business meeting. We are off dispersments.
Exactly. It is a business meeting. Director Weisberg deserves her information. Please give it to her.
Thank you.
Director Weisberg, did you want to talk about human resources?
Yes. There's a retirement. Rhonda Place has worked for the district for 18 years at Lake Elmo Elementary as a secretary, and I just wanted to say congratulations. That's it.
Thank you. All right. So we are, we still need to accept the consent agenda, items A through I. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. Next item on our agenda on reports. A is first policy reading for Policy 731, Post-Issuance Debt Compliance. Dr. Cherry.
Thank you Chair Petrie, Board Director, Superintendent Landsfeld. Coming to you today from the Policy Working Group and presenting Policy 731, a new policy for its first reading. This is called the Post-Issuance Debt Compliance Policy. The IRS encourages issuers and beneficiaries of taxes exempt obligations to adopt and implement a post-issuance debt compliance policy and procedures to safeguard against post-issuance violations. Our district desires to monitor these obligations to ensure compliance with the IRS Code, Treasury Regulations, and the SEC Rule. To help ensure compliance, the district has developed this policy, our Post-Issuance Debt Compliance Policy. The tax-exempt status of a debt obligation is contingent on compliance without applicable state and federal laws at the time of issuance and throughout the term of the obligation. And such compliance requires our district to undertake certain record-keeping and computational activities. This policy helps us understand what those obligations are and how we carry them out. The policy is presented in your packet for your review. Again, this is our first reading, and we would welcome any input, both from board members or community members. And we would take any of those comments back to our Policy Working Group and anticipate a second reading at the next board meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions about this first policy reading? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the second item on reports, the third policy reading for Policy 705 Investments. Dr. Cherry.
Thank you Chair Petrie, Board Directors, and Superintendent Landsfeld. This is one of the series of finance policies that we had come to earlier this spring with, and this is our investments policy. It is a revision of a current investment policy that we have on our books. It is in alignment with the MSBA model policy. We have come to the board already two times with two separate readings. Since that time, we've had some additional feedback from our finance department, our finance experts. And in the MSBA model policy, there are a couple of items that would be very difficult for our district to carry out and are somewhat redundant in nature. They fall on page four of the policy in Section 14, and it's under the reporting requirements section. This item, in our third reading, one of the major changes, as it is suggested that we would strike, Item 14B and 14C. These are two items that explain some additional reporting. This is, these are two items that our, our district does not currently undertake. We do not have the capacity to do that. We have checked to see if it would be possible for us to fit this into our current workload, or perhaps seek outside expertise for us to handle these things. And at this time, it is not financially feasible. So we are suggesting at this time that we take out Section 14B and C, which, with those two items removed, are actually in alignment with the way that our investment policy currently stands. And so at this time, this is a third reading of this policy, and we are open to any comments or feedback at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments or questions on Policy 705? Okay, thank you. I was remiss. Under the consent agenda, we did vote, but we actually did not have a motion and a second. So we're just going to do that again. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, Director Hockert? Is there a second? Director Porbeny. All those in favor of the consent agenda, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to Item C under reports, Stillwater Middle School gym floor removal and abatement. Director Drummerhausen.
Good evening, Chair Petrie, members of the board. On July 3rd, a couple weeks ago, Stillwater Middle School had a fire sprinkler that separated in the music area in the hallway. The result of that is there's water that drained into the gym floor and then flooded that wood floor. We had a cleaning crew come out as quickly as we could to get the water out of the gym and then put dehumidifiers in there to try to save the gym floor. That was not feasible. The floor buckled or has a considerable amount of heaving in the gym floor. So we do need to remove that gym floor. The gym floor is the original and is constructed with adhesive barriers that do contain asbestos. So I know we do not like to do reports and action here at the same meeting, but with this, we would like to have this floor removed and the asbestos abatement completed before school starts. So that's why here we have a report followed by an action right afterwards. Administration met with contractors on July 12th to seek proposals to remove the gym floor under full asbestos containment. We estimate about $130,000 for this project. We had five proposals that we received on Monday, July 19th. The lowest bid was from Mabel Systems of White Bear for a total of $81,678. The cost of this will be submitted to our district insurance company for reimbursement. The abatement project will be funded originally through the LTFM fund and then credited back once the insurance coverage gets back to us. So with that, approval here, we will start with abatement on August 2nd and then be done right before workshop week with teachers to get back. So with that, I will open up for any questions or comments that people may have.
Okay. Questions, comments? Director Hockert.
Just curious, how, when would the project start, and is it going to get done before school starts, or how long would it take?
Two projects. The first one is the removal. The second one is getting the gym floor in there. So this one is just about removing the current gym floor. So that would start August 2nd and be done right before workshop week. So that means there's just a cement floor there for the start of the school year. The reality is, we're probably looking around spring break to get a replacement. So we've already been in contact with the school, with the principal about physical education classes and other use of the gym. Also, after-school activities for the middle school as well as community ed, in terms of that gym will be off limits. So looking at next steps, so this here is to get the gym removed, the gym floor removed before. From our bidding process would be, we, we moved it back just a little bit. So we're going to go out for advertisements of bids next Friday, the 30th, and then also the 6th, and we'll issue the drawings from world on April 12th. We're going to do the pre-bid walkthrough for the new gym on August 22nd, or excuse me, August 26th. And the reason we're doing it then is we want the people who are going to bid on the gym floor to actually see what the current floor looks like. So as we go through bids for that project, it's not going to come back and say, oh, we didn't know about this, or didn't know about that, that people can bid on what they can actually see. So we'll go out for, have a bid opening September 9th. We'll come to this board here for September 23rd for approval with that. And then after that, we'll, the next week or two, we'll get with the company to go through shop drawings, whatever, and then go out for lumber. There is a little bit of lead time right now with lumber, with all the construction going on. And then we'll get the gym floor installed. We'd like to do it sooner, but the final coat is oil-based, which will have a little bit of a smell. So we're hoping to do it over spring break when kids aren't around. If it is really rushed, we can do it at a different period where there is maybe a longer weekend. We'll try to do that. But we also need to try to be realistic around this project and when we can get it completed. So we'll get it done as fast as we can, but there is two separate projects. This one is just the removal. We'll be coming back early September about a new gym floor for that area.
Director Sherman.
I just wanted to thank you, Mark, and just comment, you and your staff and vendors who have come in to kind of help you around the clock and in the early morning hours. I mean, it's unfortunate, but I feel, I mean, you've got such a handle on it, so I appreciate that, and I know our families and students.
Any of the people that come. I mean, it was a 2:00 AM wake-up call on July 3rd, 4th of July weekend there, that, that early Saturday morning, and, and got people out right away to, to try to mitigate as best we could.
Thank you.
Superintendent Landsfeld.
Director Sherman beat me to it. I just wanted to publicly thank Director Drummerhausen, Tony Wilger, our head engineer and custodial staff at Stillwater Middle School, a gentleman from Kraus Anderson that was doing LTFM work. They were all there at 2:30 in the morning, July 4th weekend, waiting in water and trying to preserve musical instruments and, and teachers' classrooms. And so, thank you, thank you, thank you. They put in countless hours during a holiday weekend. So thank you.
I wonder if you can fill us in on what other damage there was, and whether that has all been taken care of at this point, like carpets and furniture?
So this is the major one that needs board approval. There was, in the hallway, the music area, there was some water into some of the classrooms, mainly the choir, orchestra, and band classrooms and some of the practice areas. So right now, we're going through the process of field environmental, looking into air quality, looking at water, looking at some of the carpet, if that needs to be removed. So we're in the process of going through all those tests and make sure what needs to be done is done here before school starts. So we don't have a full list of that right now. This was the big-ticket item one that we need to get moving on right away, but we'll, we'll have the building all ready to rock and roll here before workshop week.
And the sprinkler system has been repaired?
It was repaired that day, actually, because we had to get it back on the system. So, you know, that day, we had the, the mitigation crew come out. We had electrician to come out to make sure that was, was working. We had the sprinkler come out. We had a lot of different entities out there that July 3rd, you know, from the wee hours in the morning all the way to about 4:00, 5:00 o'clock at night, just to make sure when staff came back that following Monday, that all systems were going. It was cleaned up as best we could.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, then we will move on to action items, and Director Drummerhausen, you might as well just stay there.
Sure.
Are there any, well, actually, would someone like to move that we accept this recommendation to remove the gym floor and abate from the abatement? Director Sherman? Is there a second, Director Porbeny? All those in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, the next item under action is the paraprofessional contract. Director Gustafson.
Thank you all and good evening. I'm here tonight to seek approval of a contract agreement with the St. Crewe Paraprofessional Association. They are represented by Education Minnesota. We met a number of times this spring and into this summer, discussed a broad range of issues related to their terms and conditions of employment. A summary of changes was sent to the board members earlier this week. Some of the highlights included in that are that we will continue a district contribution towards health insurance that is 85% district pay, 15% employee pay for the family coverage. We will continue the same level of coverage for dental as well. We have a salary schedule increase of 0% in the first year, which is the 2021 school year. They are a year off from some of our other contracts. So they just finished the first year of their contract. 4.1 in year two, which is this coming year, '21, '22. They also, we added a longevity step to the matrix for those that have been here more than 20 years. Prior to that, the top step was at 11 years. They felt it important to recognize those that have been in service to our district for a long time, so we appreciate that. We also added a stipend to help attract and retain our health care professionals. That had been a very difficult position to hire for and to retain employees in prior to the pandemic, and we are really struggling now as there is so much more need for health care workers in all aspects of life. They are harder and harder to find, and so we have added a stipend that we do feel will help us to retain folks, but also bring in new people when we need to. A couple of language changes. We did allow them to trade out a sick leave day for a discretionary leave day. That is a memo of understanding, so we're going to try that out this year and see how that goes. It's really important for us that employees are entering absences as early as possible. In a discretionary leave day, you need to enter it at least 48 hours before. The percentage of filling that with a substitute is much higher than if it's entered last minute. And so that additional flexibility is important to retain our staff, but also helps out our students by allowing to make sure that we have a better chance of getting a sub in all cases. We also updated leave language just to reflect that sick leave and bereavement leave could be used for domestic partners. We are working to make sure that all of our contracts are as inclusive as they can be for all of our staff. And we also did take a look at solidifying the district sick leave bank, which was something we had done in all the other contracts as well. I do want to thank the members of the negotiation team for their hard work on this contract. We had Chris Hefferly, who's the president of our St. Crewe Paraprofessional Association, Paul Seba, who works for Education Minnesota and is their field rep, Alison McGinnis, Shannon Dizio, Margot Tipke, Elizabeth Connors, Pam Wolers, and Regina Kopeski. And Ashley Jeong, our new HR supervisor, helped out with that process as well. So I thank all of them for the time that they put into the process and to this good outcome. Finally, the agreement falls within the parameters that the board had set and asked us to come to a contract agreement on. And so I do ask for your approval tonight so that we can move forward with their contract. Are there any questions?
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the paraprofessional contract? Director Hockert, is there a second? Director Porbeny? Questions? Director Weisberg.
Yeah, I'm just curious why this didn't come as a report first. I mean, I understand you sent things earlier in the week, but the way we have done it in the past, personnel committee met, or we had, we met in a closed session and discussed things. And I'm just curious why it came straight as an action and not a report.
So it comes for the parameters, and those are talked through. But then when the contract agreement comes, it's always just been on the action items. There has not been a report first and then an action. That's been true for all of these contracts. And in my previous district, that was also how it was done. So that's, that's the pattern there. Anything else? Director Riley.
So I'll be voting no because we just simply can't afford this right now. I mean, like I said, we were, we were above $4 million, right? 4.3 million more we're spending now or in April than we were, you know, last year at this time. $3 million loss in student enrollment, so we're up over $7 million just that, just there. We really just can't afford it right now, and we couldn't afford it. We couldn't afford the teacher raise either. I am curious, though, at what point does the transparency come with showing the community what the actual dollars are? Because we never really receive anything where the costs are laid out for the community, like what the actual raise is for all groups individually. At what point does the community get that?
All of our contracts are on our website, so, I mean, you can certainly look to see what all of our rates are and all of that information. I tried to come forward and share with you, you know, the information here on what those settlements have been. We've, I guess I would, if there are specific questions you have or information you're looking for, I'm happy to reply to you and send that to you in some format. But I'm trying to, you know, give as much information on the settlement as we can.
Yeah, at what point do you come out and say what the parameters are? Is it before the vote, after the vote? I mean, at what point is it disclosed or can it be disclosed to community is my question? Is there something legal within that?
So the unions can request the closed session recordings after their contract has been settled and approved. So they could look at it at that point. It is also obviously part of, in terms of where the money goes, that would be part of the budget. So as a district looks to where things are, here's the budget. Here's what's spent on salaries. Here's what's spent on buildings. Here's what's spent on materials. All of those types of things would be included in the budget. Right, right. Anything else? Director Sherman.
I just thank you for this work. I know that coming in to the new position that you had, it was probably really challenging, so I appreciate the work you've done. I want to just make a point that we had not, we were the last in the state to settle contracts. So I know that this is kind of wrapping that up. And I really just want the staff in our district to know how much we appreciate what they've done during these difficult times. And I think that can't be stated enough. We do have financial challenges. I think our interim superintendent made a really good point today where, you know, we have challenges. Challenges in enrollment, challenges in the operating levy, challenges providing technology. And so certainly, the next cycle will likely look very different. But I appreciate the work and would like to call a question if we're done.
Yeah, and I would, I am going to be voting yes for this. You know, this is, this is pretty much the last employee contract that needed to be settled, working with the parameters that we had before. And it certainly doesn't seem fair to me to say no to this particular, the paraprofessionals group, when we have said yes to the other groups. So I will be voting yes on this. Okay, well, if there are no other comments or questions, all those in favor of accepting the paraprofessional contract, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
I abstain.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Thank you all very much. Thank you. All right, last item on our agenda is the district handbook.
Good evening, Board Chair Petrie and members of the board. Sorry, I'm behind a few of you here. I apologize for that. Every fall, we're required to inform families of district policies and the required notices, and all of this lives in the district handbook, which is an electronic document on our website. As presented at the last meeting, we are seeking board approval for that handbook. And so tonight, I would ask for your approval.
All right, is there a motion to accept the district handbook? Director Porbeny, is there a second? Director Sherman, comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor of approving the district handbook, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Okay, motion passes unanimously. All right, next item on the agenda is the board chair report. I'm going to turn this time over to Director Weisberg, who has a statement to make.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Petrie, for giving me this opportunity. I wish board members still had this opportunity at the end of each meeting. This is officially my last board meeting as I'm resigning effective immediately. Those that have been watching or attending meetings, Noah have asked repeatedly for administration to implement the letters training approved by the previous board. To this day, I do not understand the many excuses or reluctance to this proven training that will help all students. I had hoped Stillwater could be a leader in helping so many of our students who have not obtained reading proficiency. I'm thrilled that the state has now allocated funding for the letters program. Unfortunately, they have not mandated it. Now I simply hope Stillwater can follow the recommendations. It was painful for me to hear the recent Read Well by Third Grade Plan, which made failure moving from 56% to 59% a smart goal. It was devastating to me that the plan was approved by this board majority. If we, if we make failure a goal, we are destined to achieve it. This is a disservice to our elementary students and district families. I am tired of ineffectively asking for action, so I've decided to pursue it myself on a much smaller scale. I have the amazing opportunity to train to become a reading tutor. My coursework begins at the beginning of August and will continue for the next year with a practicum. Although I desperately wish my decisions could have helped all students, I'm excited to begin actually helping students if only one at a time. I thank all the people who have been a constant source of inspiration and helped me throughout my term as a board member. I deeply apologize that I will not be fulfilling the term for which so many of you worked. I honestly believe I can do more good for this community in my role as a tutor. I wish nothing but the best for the families and students of this district, and I leave this position knowing that I have done the best I can. Thank you.
And I would just like to say thank you to Director Weisberg. Public service is not for the faint of heart, which I think you probably know. I think all of us know. And I just want to say, on behalf of all of the people at this table, I am sure that we appreciate all the time and effort you have put in over the last few years because I know that you missed things that you wanted to go to. You had to race back here in a thunderstorm. I know that there are lots of things that you had to forego to sort of fulfill your duties as a public servant. And we all, we all owe a debt to everyone who does that. And so I just want to say thank you. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.